Oh, Corum.
Figaro.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
Hade.
Here.
Kovak.
Present.
Lewis.
Here.
Radzinski.
Here.
Rago.
Here.
We have a Corum, uh, can we stand for the presence of allegiance?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Fenton mission, beliefs, and bison way statement change?
Yes, our Fenton, uh, mission statement to cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Our Fenton belief statement, successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engage learning with the state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way, students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectation expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Mary, do we have any requests for public comments?
Yes, we do.
As a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker with a limit this evening of thirty minutes total.
Okay, first speaker is Paul Welsh.
Good evening, good evening, school board, good evening, brothers and sisters. This is beautiful, beautiful sight. My name is Paul Welsh. I'm a school counselor here at Fenton, finishing my ninth year here, my twentieth year in education. I'm looking forward to the end of the school year, some time at home over the, over the summer with the family. I'm also going to take some time this summer to serve as the president of the Illinois Association for College Admission Counseling. We work hard during the school year to serve our students and to serve our community, and I'm going to continue to work hard serving students, leading this statewide professional association as a volunteer leader on my own time. You are also volunteer leaders, and I'm grateful for your service. Thank you. I urge this school board, not just those of you at the table, but the entire Fenton Board of Education, because the responsibility to negotiate a fair contract with my brothers and sisters rests with this entire body. I urge you to negotiate in good faith, to come together with us on common ground that we all share, a contract that is fair to teachers and fiscally responsible to taxpayers. Returning to school in August without a fair contract will distract all of us, teachers, administrators, school board members, from doing what we are committed to do, to serve this community to the best of our abilities. Thank you.
Sue Gasko.
Good evening, my name is Sue Gasko, and I'm here at the board meeting again for the second time in my thirty-two years of teaching. Just share some thoughts with you. I'm looking forward to seeing the conclusion of another successful school year and to get ready for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. During the summer, I go ahead and redo things like syllabus, syllabi, lessons, things like that, all on my own time, all unpaid. I do this because I want the school year to be a smooth start for myself as well as for the students. After all, this is best for them. Our students deserve a good start and a quality education. It is important to me that we begin this school year without any distractions. Returning to a new school year without a new contract is a stressful distraction from what is most important, teaching students. I appreciate what you do for us and ask you to negotiate in good faith with the Fenton Education's bargaining team to reach a tentative agreement prior to the start of next school year. It is often said that we are one big Fenton family. Let's walk that talk. I urge you to truly work together to reach a tentative agreement as a true Fenton family would. Thank you for your time.
Candace Demoral.
Good evening, I'm Candace Demoral. Some of you might recognize me. Um, I have been a teacher here for twenty-eight years. Uh, in fact, next year is my last year as I will retire in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. In those twenty-eight years, I have never been to a school board meeting. Um, but, uh, but the current situation here has kind of compelled me to come and speak before you. Excuse me, um. First, here's a little bit about me. I, I was a resident of Bensonville for twenty-nine years. My late husband went to school at Tioga, Chipewa, Blackhawk Middle School, graduated from Fenton High School. He taught, um, at Tioga. He coached here. He taught Driver's Head. He talked to, or taught a lot of the students that are still here today. He impacted a lot of lives. In fact, um, the gym at Tioga has his name in his honor. It's the Thomas P. Gymnasium, Thomas P. Demoral Gymnasium. My kids went to school here, too. They went to Johnson, they went to Blackhawk Middle School, and they graduated from Fenton High School. So you can see I was kind of unique. I had was both a resident, so I was a parent and a teacher here in the district. Um, so on July first, twenty-seventeen, my life was forever changed. When I received the news that my, my oldest son and my husband died in a plane crash, okay? And, uh, when that happened, your life is never the same, right? When this unthinkable, unimaginable, tragic event happened, my Fenton family, right here, the teachers, they, they were there for me. They came to my house, they gave me food, they brought food every week. They were selfless, like teachers are. They worked countless hours outside of school, not only with students, but now they took me out. We are a family. Um, six months later, another unimaginable event. Already?
I yield my time to Candace.
Thank you. When I was diagnosed with, uh, stage-three breast cancer, once again, my family, right here, my Fenton family was there for me, okay? And I feel that now it is my turn to be there for them, even though I am retiring next year. I need to be there for them. And I am here because, um, quite frankly, I'm, I'm angry. Um, I'm angry that some of the proposals being offered by this board are, are deemed on your behalf as, uh, as a fair contract, when in fact, it sounds a little insulting and hurtful, uh, and, and far from equitable. Can anyone here look me in the eye right now and say to me, gee Candace, I am so sorry you lost your husband and your child, but hey, they weren't in, uh, your medical plan, so, huh, sorry, you get no bereavement days. Or can anyone imagine saying, gee, now that you have stage-three breast cancer and you need, uh, chemotherapy and you need to take your days off, but you don't have enough, sorry, you know, we don't have enough in a sick bank, or we're not willing to give you more. I don't want that to happen to my Fenton family. And, uh, I urge you, I urge you to please, you know, I, first of all, I hope that none of you ever have to go through what I went through. But if for some tragic situation ever were to happen to you, I hope you're treated with dignity and respect and not what seems to me like a slap in the face. You're trying to give us with, uh, you know, an equitable proposal. I urge you to negotiate in good faith so that we can have a fair contract by the beginning of the school year, so that we as teachers can go back and focus on what we love to do and our passion, our passion, which is our children, our students. Thank you.
Abra Millman.
We love you, Candace. Hi, my name is Abra Millman, and I'm just completing my seventeenth year here at Fenton. I love Fenton. I really, really do. I also miss the Fenton I used to know, the Fenton that was not so starkly divided between classroom teachers and administration. I miss the Fenton that embraced, encouraged, and applied teacher-generated ideas to the foundational philosophical, philosophical, philosophy of the school. I have volunteered to serve on every interview committee as well as various other committees and have a very clear recollection of when I realized my opinion no longer held value. I miss Fenton I was hired into. I miss the Fenton that trusted teachers. I miss the Fenton that made eye contact and had potlucks and that didn't threaten to sue its teachers. I have committed my professional career to Fenton High School. I am asking for Fenton High School to invest in us, the teachers. We deserve and have earned a fair contract at the beginning of the school year. Our students are owed the best education that we can provide them, and the lack of a fair contract denies our kids of everything they deserve. Don't do that. Not cool. Go Bison.
Josh Payton.
Hello, my name is Joshua Payton, and I wanted to share a few of the significant ways Fenton has impacted my life. The strongest feelings I have when I think of Fenton are passion and gratitude. I have an abundance of gratitude for all the relationships that I have experienced as part of the Fenton family. I also have passion for what I do. It was formed here inside these halls, and it lives here every day, and my hope is that the students that we teach will carry it on with them as they leave this building. I graduated from Fenton in two thousand. During my time here as a student, I was incredibly fortunate to be guided by teachers, coaches, and other staff members. Teachers like Mr. Grothie, Mr. Siple, Ms. Waco, Ms. Kurtz, Ms. Harmon, and Mr. Johnson helped me through my freshman year and becoming acclimated to high school. They shared their passion not only for their courses they taught, but more importantly, for their students. Coach Howard and Coach Valente took a chance on a very tall freshman and gave me the opportunity to discover the benefits that come with hard work and what it means to be part of a team. During my high school career, I continued to grow and benefit from the teachers who not only loved what they did, but also working with their students. Teachers like Ms. Roach, Mr. Lewis, Ms. Vera, Ms. Johnson Manos, Ms. Rothheisen, Mrs. George, Ms. Bosin, Mr. Clark, Mr. Oakson, Mr. Ayers, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Anderson, Mrs. Hogstedt, Mr. Echols, Mr. Lot, Mr. Lehman, Mr. Jeskey, and Mrs. Taylor. As I completed my time here, Ms. Emi Enen and Coach Cromer helped ensure that I was able to go on to college and pursue my education and play basketball. All these teachers guided me, they helped me, they taught me, and they supported me. I could not overstate the importance of all these people in my life. I did not understand how deeply they impacted me until my Fenton experience came full circle. That moment was in two thousand and five, when I reconnected with Coach Cromer and became part of the basketball staff here. Through my work on the basketball staff, I was provided with the opportunity to become a person of impact in the lives of students. I had a chance to use all that was given to me as a student here and help students at Fenton live up to their fullest potential. It helped me decide to go back to school and pursue my teaching license. For the past fifteen years, I have been part of the teaching staff. I was again so, so fortunate to receive the guidance and support and see the passion of the teaching here for the students. The example that the teachers I knew as a student and their dedication continue to impact me today. The experience I had as a student, as well as now as a teacher, set the standard for how I live my life. The teachers who supported me as a student and who are now, and who now welcome me as a colleague, were able to do so because they were empowered and they were supported. They were able to focus on students because the work environment allowed them to do so. In fifteen years here as a teacher, Fenton has, I'm sorry, in fifteen years as a teacher here at Fenton, there have been three times when my ability to maintain complete focus on the students was impacted. The first two instances were previous contract negotiations with the current administration. The third is the con, the current contract negotiation. Starting next school year without a contract in place would undoubtedly have an incredibly negative impact on this building. Fenton students deserve to have an experience that is not mired by the negativity being created by the current negotiation process. Students deserve teachers that are solely focused on continuing to build positive and productive relationships. Students deserve to be supported, and students deserve the opportunity to walk into this building and continue to receive every ounce of our attention and our ability. Thank you.
Melissa Roach.
I defer my time to Laura Vila.
She didn't sign in, though.
Hi, my name is Laura Vila, and I've been an ESL social studies teacher here at Fenton for the past five years. I work with non-traditional students who require much more different supports than the general student population. In two thousand and eighteen, I was welcomed into the Fenton family. Here, there was a team of teachers who understood the vast needs of EL students. I was eventually invited to Professional Development Symposium that took me across the country, where I spoke with an administrator over dinner about the challenges I faced as an EL teacher. Their reaction was out of awe and astonishment as I spoke about the immigrant trauma, gaps in education, and varied languages and levels present in one classroom, and they asked me how I cope with it. Prior to that, I never really considered all that the EL department does, so I didn't have an answer. The administrator had little information or feedback to ease my day-to-day experiences with the students that I work with. Once, when COVID hit, all of the Fenton teachers went to the ends of the earth to support the students emotionally and academically, to provide them with the things that they needed to be successful in school. Post-COVID, I was, um, I would be planning or having lunch, only to be pulled out multiple times per day by, by an administrator to sub in other classes. None of this was easy. The demands of all of it was stressful. In April of two thousand and twenty-two, I had a stress-induced seizure witnessed by students in the classroom, and I was rushed to the hospital where I was for three days. My body and mind literally had driven me to the point where I collapsed and could no longer fulfill my, my role as an educator. Other than my DL and Union Brothers, Union Brothers and Sisters of the FEA, no one from the district cared to check in or to see what my health status was during that time. The only phone call I got was to, um, find out when I was coming back to work. At this point, the Fenton was no longer my family. It was simply my employer. The lack of interest or care on behalf of the district proved to me that I was simply just their employee, nothing else. The end of last year was very difficult. I considered leaving the school and, and the teaching profession as a whole. When I finally worked up the courage and said, and courage and faith to set a meeting with HR, prior to my return to work, I was met with very administrative talk and was told that the district had no interest and no place in knowing what had happened to me. No accommodations were put in place, and my regular workload and commitments resumed once more. This two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three academic year was very much a trial year. I could have stayed, or I could have gone. I set my own boundaries when it came to work, and I communicated my needs with, with my DLs. Since then, it's been all right. Even to this day, the area I teach in and the students I work with are faced with inequitable facilities, and our needs still seem to be placed second. My true family here is the one that I see every day. The ones who ask me how I'm doing, staff and students alike, those who I see in the hallway with their suits, occasionally speaking Spanish to me, smiling and waving, show no interest or support, and knowing what it's like to be within the classroom walls, they've simply forgotten. While the students greatly depend on us, there is very little support or acknowledgement of the things teachers need or how we are treated. Thank you.
Michael Baker.
Can you repeat the name?
Michael Baker.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Baker, and I've been a science teacher here at Fenton for ten years. As our school year comes to a close, my mind is already working on what I need to do to prepare for and improve for the fall. Over the summer, I'll spend two weeks in champagne with the U of I Physics Department as a teaching fellow in their secondary school research program. I'll devote many hours between home and Fenton to creating and improving curriculum and resources, and some of that time I'll be compensated for, some I will not. But the reason I do it is so that when the fall term starts, I'm prepared to be the best possible teacher that I can be for our kids. In my ten years at Fenton, I've taught nine different courses, and next year I'll add a tenth. Every semester is different, brings new challenges. Once the school year starts, the first and foremost task is getting to know my kids, discovering what motivates them, and making changes to my planning in order to meet their specific needs as best as I can. It's in the best interest of our students to have a settled contract in time for the start of the fall term. If we do not, it's likely to cause distraction. I spoke to you in March about how lucky I feel to be part of a community that cares so deeply for the welfare of its students. I strongly believe that in each branch of this community, there are some of the best and most hard-working professionals that you could ever hope to find. You've heard so many stories from alumni, parents, of what an amazing experience Fenton was for their kids, and what an enormous impact it made on their lives. And it's because for so long, Fenton has been a destination school for people to come and work. But you're also hearing stories tonight of warning signs of how that could change, and I'm asking you, we're at a crossroads. Please, go in the right direction. For our kids, for our parents, for our community, they are counting on us now. I want to start the school year without distraction, and it's important to me that the contract we negotiate is fair and recognizes the professionalism and commitment that we make to our students twelve months out of the year. Thank you for your time.
Mallory Healy.
Good evening, my name is Mallory Healy, and I've been a teacher at Fenton High School for fourteen years. I'm looking forward to the conclusion of another successful year and taking my time this summer to spend with my family. I also look forward to the arrival of my fourth child in July. In addition, I plan to use part of the summer to prepare for the upcoming school year. I know that the time that I put in over the summer will benefit my future students. Once I return, uh, to work, my new daughter will be joining her two sisters at our local daycare, the price of which is increasing significantly, as are so many other expenses for my family as the result of the current economy. Returning to a school year without a new contract is a stressful distraction from what's most important, teaching our amazing students. We appreciate what you do for us and ask that you negotiate with the FEA to reach a fair contract before the start of the school year. Thank you.
Mike Laudermith.
Good evening, my name is Mike Laudermith, and I've been a teacher here at Fenton High School now for eighteen years. I'm looking forward to seeing the conclusion of another school year for students and taking some time over the summer. I'll be directing Quizbowl camps that welcome middle school and high school students from across the country. I'll be writing questions for the middle school and high school Scholastic Bowl State Series. Some of you may be aware, but since October, I have not been at Fenton on a Wednesday for the reason that I've been serving on a federal grand jury. It's very interesting, but I can tell you something. Not a week goes by that I don't see the results of adults who, as children, did not receive the kind of support that our students get from teachers like these every single day. And it's very sad, because you can talk to some of these people, and I'm sure they would tell you, if only there was an adult in my life who had stood up for me at the right moment, I wouldn't be here where I'm at now. I think that's so important to remember. Those are the intangibles and, and the future that we sometimes forget about. I know that the teachers at Fenton work hard during the school year to make sure our students experience a quality education. On average, Fenton teachers will work an average of nine extra unpaid hours per week. We spend several hours in the summer getting ready for this new school year. Not only do we work many of those hours unpaid during the summer, but teachers spend an average of four hundred dollars of their own money on classroom materials. We look forward to welcoming the students back and starting a new school year, and it's important that we have as few distractions as possible. Returning to a new school year without a new contract is a stressful distraction from what is most important, teaching our students and ensuring that they have the best possible future ahead of them. We appreciate what you do for us, and all we We appreciate what you do for us, and all we ask is that you negotiate with the Fenton bargaining team in good faith so that we can have an equitable, fair, and satisfactory contract when the new school year begins. Thank you.
My name is Sochi Quinones, and I graduated last year. I currently attend the University of Wisconsin-Madison despite the Penn State hoodie. I'm on a full ride. I am double majoring in Communication Theory and Sociology and work with two nonprofits. I wanted to take some time to express gratitude and support for our teachers and all that they have helped me accomplish in the past year alone. When I transferred to Fenton, I was afraid of two main things: public speaking and sharing my art. I went from shaking at open mics and being afraid of presenting to now meeting celebrities and famous writers and actors, performing in full auditoriums, writing a novel, and best of all, not being afraid to let my voice and story be heard. I also survived a suicide attempt my senior year, thanks to Mrs. Raj. And she never hesitated to make sure that I was supported every single day. I stepped into her room, sorry. To Ms. Millman, Mr. Oakson, and Mr. Escobedo, I owe my writing success to you. To Coach Hendricks, I owe my passion, my talent, and my bravery to you. Thank you for always pushing me to keep fighting the good fight for change. These are only some of the teachers who have shaped me. It wouldn't be fair, then, for me to not vocalize the importance of a fair contract for them. In what world does the exploitation of teachers sound safe? The disempowerment of teachers is the first step towards regressing as a society, no matter how local it may feel. These teachers are community members, leaders, coaches, parents, who are student C for a full third of their day, eight hours straight. So why do you continue to try and cheat them of a contract that protects them? I want to echo what John Aguilar stated in the April meeting. It's not normal in any system for there to be reoccurring issues with elected officials, especially one at such a local level. Illinois is one of the top states in education, and we do that through protecting and prioritizing our teachers and students through fair contracts. Please do what is common sense and right, and give our teachers an appropriate and honorable contract. Thank you.
It's lovely to be back at Fenton High School after I graduated last year. My name is Abby Niehoff. Over my Fenton career, I swam on the varsity Lady Bison Swim Team all four years. I participated in every choir class and extracurricular that was available to me, and I was inducted into the National Honor Society, Anthrolym Music Honor Society. I went to state for group interpretation, performed at Spring Musical, and graduated with cumulative unweighted GPA of 3.86. I currently attend St. Louis University with a major in Public Health and a minor in Sociology, and I'm honored to say that I attend SLU with a vice presidential scholarship. I am speaking tonight in support of a fair and honorable contract for Fenton teachers. I am proud to say I graduated from Fenton because of all of the educators in this room and occupying this building daily. Mr. Jeff Bader and Dr. George Mussmann's kindness and support for students and athletes or performers, Mrs. Sarady Williams and Mr. Mike Berry's compassion for their subjects, countless other contributions to the Fenton community are at risk of being undercut and belittled with these contract negotiations. It's important to support not only the staff members, but the school as a whole. We must consider the state of disrepair the building is in and the amount of good a fair contract would do to improve day-to-day functions. The school year is about to end, but this doesn't mean the work is over for teachers and staff. It would be incredibly disrespectful and immoral to mail it in during these contract negotiations. I am one of many voices speaking in support, and I implore you that you not only listen to, but hear and consider our demands for the better of Fenton educators and put them into action. It's what's right. Thank you.
Some of you may know me. My name is Isabella Weglars, and I graduated last year. I was a student of Mr. DiMauro at Tioga Elementary School. And I now coach track at East Lansing High School while double majoring in Psychology and Criminal Justice, as well as double minoring in Spanish and Sociology at Michigan State And I'm here to speak about the teachers and staff of Fenton High School. During my four years here, every single staff member that I ever interacted with, be it a teacher, coach, or even a security guard, they have all been amazing people. And I would like to emphasize "people." People who have good days, people who have experienced bad days, people who come here regardless of how well their day, or week, or month, or year is going, and yet continue to brighten the days of hundreds of students. I can remember all the countless times I'd have a bit of an off day, but the moment I saw Ms. Regendran, or Mr. George, or Coach Kekstep, there was a shift in my attitude. And this only names a few of the individuals that I still think of every single day. At a time where there's a teacher shortage, this district needs to be holding on to these people as tight as possible. There is a very special standard that all the staff here meets, and I would hate for it to be lowered simply because of a lack of communication and unwillingness to walk a mile in someone else's shoes. I can't tell you what to do, but I can suggest that you begin to listen before it's too late. Thank you.
My name is Ilinae Alicia Severano Perez, and I am an alumni from last year. I currently go to Macalester College in St. Paul, Minnesota, where I'm double majoring in both Data Science and Educational Studies. If you all don't know, Minnesota just passed the Ethnic Studies Bill, and my school had the opportunity to go into the Capitol to go protest for this bill earlier this year. While I was at the Capitol, I talked wonders about all the teachers here, because the teachers here are the people who have shown me what an education is. It's one of the reasons why I'm going to Educational Studies. Sorry, give me just a second. And I feel like you all should go and give them a fair contract. The reason is, is because they impact all of the students' lives, including mine and my brothers, one of them who is currently attending here and one of them who is going to attend here. Because these are the teachers who encouraged me to double major, and as much as they don't know, I'm double majoring in a school that doesn't really double major in both Social Studies and this thing. But they also encouraged me to try a lot of extracurriculars. I hosted a women's project, and a lot of the teachers here noticed. I would sleep in their class whenever my family was going through things, and they noticed. And they deserve your support and my support. So, yeah, thank you.
Mary, how many more do we have? We had the 30-minute, just wanted to know.
Stephanie Jackson.
I'm an English teacher here. School year's over in two days, and I'm sure most of you know, after we leave here, teachers are going to be planning for the next school year over the summer. The start of the school year is a time of new beginnings, and it requires me as a teacher to have unlimited energy and creativity. I need to inspire welcoming class environments where my students feel valued and safe to learn and have a voice. Part of crafting this atmosphere, which any teacher can tell you, requires a great deal of intentionality and thoughtfulness, depends on teachers working to build relationships with brand-new students by getting to know them individually. To be sure, this also needs to happen relatively quickly to earn students' goodwill so that quality work will follow. The idea of not having a contract settled for the beginning of the school year is likely to cause substantial distraction and a negative work culture for teachers, who need to start the year off on a positive note. This is especially important to me because the teachers are already ending the current school year, walking out of this building on Friday, having filed an initial 90-day notice with the Illinois Labor Relations Board for the first time in decades because we still have not achieved a fair contract. Unless there is a substantial shift in the direction of current negotiations, the impending disruption to the 2023-24 school year will surely spread to our students, students who will not be getting the best of their teachers if we are forced to begin the year in the toxic work climate, that negotiations continuing into the following school year will inevitably create, which many of us previously experienced firsthand in 2016, which was a personal low point of my time at Fenton and probably at least half of the people in this room, if not more. It is paramount to me that a fair contract is negotiated before the beginning of next school year.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Wright, and I'm just completing my fourth year at Fenton as a teacher librarian, the most enjoyable job in the building. I'm so grateful to work here, where I've experienced professional collegiality and warm-hearted encouragement from my peers and supervisors from day one. In the relatively short time I've worked here, I've seen Fenton's mission borne out through its many effective programs run by remarkable teachers, staff, and administrators. After 18 years of teaching in the Chicago Public School District with its bureaucracy and politics, landing at District 100 was a refreshing balm. Fenton is a healthy, well-functioning school and a strong, hard-working community. Here, I feel greatly supported in my job of helping students learn and grow through robust library programming and instruction. During the COVID pandemic, true collaboration among administrators, faculty, and staff resulted in an exemplary remote learning plan that provided stability for Fenton families and employees during difficult times. I would love to see that same spirit of true collaboration applied to this contract negotiation process. Surely, open-minded discussion and creative compromise are a better basis for seeking solutions to fiscal challenges than stalemates and strikes. In 2012, I remember how exhausted I and families and students were after picketing and marching for nine days. Rather than starting off the year with this demoralizing conflict, I'm hoping that we can enter our school year '23-24 encouraged by goodwill and trust among all stakeholders, excited to implement the teaching plans we've carefully prepared, and energized to pour our care into our students. Thank you.
My name is Nicole Hendricks, and I have been an English teacher, speech coach, and group interpretation director at Fenton High School for 19 years. I was fortunate enough to have my student teaching assignment here and even doubly fortunate to be hired by the then Board of Education in the summer of 2004. I've made it my home, quite literally, once I've slept over. Okay. Teachers dedicate themselves to the art of teaching through their careers, and yes, over summers. Many hours, many dollars, and many nights and weekends are spent by Fenton teachers invested in your children. Many of my colleagues have already mentioned similar sentiments and core values. One of my core values is to offer students a safe and inviting space to be curious, to explore, to speak, to find their voice, to be collaborative, and to be thoughtful. Parents, teachers, administrators, coaches, support staff, parapros, all know the strong structure students require in order to flourish in their personal and educational development. The pandemic experience taught us exactly what we lose when that structure is shaken. I implore you to bargain in good faith with our FEA team to reach a tentative agreement that is fair, reflective of our worth as educators. Real quick, fellow educators, can you raise your hand if you have a master's degree? Can you raise your hand if you have two master's degrees? Can you raise your hand if you have a doctorate? Can you raise your hand if you're working towards a doctorate? Okay. I'd say you have highly qualified staff. Remember that this contract is a promise to our students that we are all invested in this Fenton community. You are the brick foundation. Teachers are the mortar, and we need to make sure this building stands and serves our children. Do not let this group crumble under the stress of beginning without a contract. We cannot offer the structure your children need if we have no structure supporting us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, especially the recent Fenton alumni who showed up to provide comment also. It was great to hear how well you're doing. Next item is recognition. Sam?
Okay, we are here to honor members of the speech team tonight. We had another strong showing at the IHSA Speech State Finals. We're going to call up Sarah Guerrero Gorizdieta, Nathan Rodriguez, and Tara Pabico. Class of 2023 Fenton graduate. Tara, how's that sound? Yeah, there you go. Okay. She's a state finalist in informative speaking. Likewise, congratulations to Nathan Rodriguez for taking sixth place in original comedy. And congratulations to Sarah for taking third in the state in original oratory. We should also remind that speech does not have divisions, so these individuals were competing against schools of larger sizes throughout the whole way, so it's an extra-special honor to compete at this level. And it's not only the speakers. I want to, we did a little research about Ms. Hendricks and Ms. Feinberg. Yeah. From when they teamed up in 2010, from our investigation, we found out that they've gone to the state finals every year. And as we tried to add up the number of students, that's more than 200 students who have participated in some form of trip to the state finals under their mentorship. So we want to thank the speech performers for the obvious amount of hours that you devoted to your craft, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hendricks, Ms. Feinberg, and Ms. O'Connor.
Hello again. Thank you so much for this acknowledgement and also for helping us, you know, supporting us and giving us what we need in order to go to state every single year. We have worked countless hours with these students and the team members that you don't see here today as well, and they are an absolute delight because they take on challenges that others would not take. And I'm sure you've heard me say this before, but we know public speaking is nerve-wracking. Even I get caught up with my own breath while I speak.
Even I get caught up with my own breath while I speak. And so, and I use this as an example for my students all the time. Tonight, we're here to celebrate Sarah, Tara, and Nathaniel for all of their efforts. We are so lucky to be having both Nathaniel and Sarah back next year so that they can make their senior run for state yet again in their events. And Tara ends her career here, but we know that we are just one step on her pathway that is going to be truly successful and eventful. And she opened that door for herself by allowing herself to tackle the events that she did as well. I would not be here without my fellow colleagues and especially Melissa Feinberg. As you heard, I was surprised to hear those stats. I haven't actually, we like to crunch data a lot at the speech tournaments, but that is not something I've crunched before. I haven't added it up. So that was nice to hear, too. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Feinberg, who will then share some information, I hope, about the kids or call the kids up. Yeah? Yes? Okay.
Ms. Hendricks is so good at this, I'm not going to sit here and belabor her points. But our kids are very special. Like she said, they're willing to take on challenges that not many people are willing to take on. They are here so late. We are here so late together every single night. They push themselves so hard, and it would be such a joy if everyone in this room could come and see what they do on a daily basis, on a weekly basis. It's so difficult to put your heart and soul into your art and then to have a judge write six on a score sheet, which is the lowest rank generally you can receive. And every, no, every one of these state finalists have received that rank, and they'll receive it over and over and over again until they don't. They'll receive it in a state final round. Speech is very subjective, scored similarly to gymnastics. So there's a set of rules that you operate under, but then it's up to judges to make a decision about how you're executing. So these kids put their art out there, get rejected for years, and keep coming back and find that success. It's admirable, and I would love to see adults do that, you know, even more. On a personal note, I'm a Fenton alumni, and there are so many teachers in this room who I owe so much to. Nicole Hendricks, Mike Mitchell, Melissa Rousch, I wouldn't be here without you. So thank you so much to those teachers, and I hope you give them the contract that they deserve. Thank you. First, I'd like to introduce Senior Tara Pabico. Say a few words.
We first want to thank our parents for driving us to school unbelievably early, just every Saturday, for dry cleaning our suits throughout the season, for being the first to hug us and congratulate us after every tournament, and for even following us to Peoria. They not only supported us, but they supported the entire team. My parents loved watching my teammates perform and compete and always offered them with snacks like they did with me, and I just feel like they became like the team's parents. Thank you for always calming me down and always giving me your endless support. This season, I really learned how it feels to be truly passionate about something and how rewarding it feels to set goals for myself. And I wanted to thank the coaches for that. This season was definitely not easy, but they never gave up on us when we went through rough patches. They helped us become stronger performers and just stronger people in general. We want to thank them for always being people we can count on and for always pushing us when we thought we couldn't keep going. We've learned a lot from them, and we will carry their wisdom with us forever. And for our team, thank you for being the reason why we got through these 12-hour days and through the state series. We know there's nobody else who would do jumping jacks with us before a round or hype us up with affirmations before the entire tournament. Thank you for being our rock and for all your support. We're lucky to have had the support system for the past three and four years, and we'll forever be grateful for this experience.
Hi, my name is Nate Rodriguez, and I am a junior, almost senior, here at Fenton. This year, I had the wonderful privilege to compete at the IHSA Speech State Finals. I would first like to start off by thanking my family, specifically my mother, for all of her endless love and support. I also would like to thank my friends and teammates for being right by my side every step of the way. Headed into state, my only goal was to break into that final round, which seemed pretty impossible, but I did it. And I owe all of my success to our amazing coaches, Ms. Melissa Feinberg, and especially Ms. Nicole Hendricks. Thank you for believing in me at times when I didn't even believe in myself.
Hello, my name is Sarah Guerrero Gorosdieta. I'm also a junior, almost senior. First, I want to thank my parents. My dad couldn't make it here tonight because he works the night shift, but he was the first, his text message was the first text message I looked at on Saturday mornings. He was the first person that hugged me whether I came home with a medal or not from a tournament. And my mom, not only did she drive me to school every Saturday morning, but she stayed up late on Friday nights ironing my speech suit so I could study and focus on my homework because I split myself into so many pieces for so many people. And I would also love to thank the educators in this room today and across the entire school. Some teachers, like Ms. Morrow and Mr. Oakson, opened up their classrooms so for our state series team to perform our state pieces in front of classrooms because they value student voice. They value student connection, and we wouldn't be state qualifiers without them. So thank you all for everything that you do, and I can't wait for next year.
Okay, now if you come forward, we're going to take a picture.
Next item is informational items. James?
All right. Again, thank you. Now, we have a couple slides here in regards to our graduation, which took place last Sunday. Thank you for everyone, the board, for showing up. First picture, Jim. Beautiful picture right there. Sam Benson's up there. Good picture to board. Mr. Madel over there with our beautiful students there, walking in. Our parents, our padres, abuelos, tios, and tias are also there. Great picture there. Really great positive vibes and feedback from our, both our students as well as our And just wanted to give Rick a shout-out here for putting these beautiful slides, nice script shots here of our graduation. This will be on our website, as well as Mr. Cambic also sent it to the Daily Herald, which will be posted, as you all know as well, the Bensonville newspaper will also print this. It's already posted, it's already up, so it's a great way to celebrate our 2023 grads here. Singer there, our choir, Ms. Williams there. I don't know who the guy is on the right. There's the principal, there's Pastor Lewis. Great shout, Mr. Figaro. I think Mr. Cambic did a great job to try to take a picture of a wide range of individuals as well as different activities and different parts of the graduation. But this is a night for the kids, 2023 and their parents. Great shot there. Sam, anything?
No, it was just a beautiful day. Everything was like picture perfect. We're outside. Like James said, a very positive vibe. The ceremony went very smooth. So no, it really couldn't have gone much better. So it was a great, great event. Couple selfies, of course.
No dancing, though.
No. It was pretty tame for the most part. A few sounds as the ceremony went along, but, and of course, the caps in the air, that's the moment they all look forward to.
That's right.
And they did hang around quite a while, taking pictures. It was really nice. We had some good setups outside, some setups inside, and there's examples, some of the balloons. We also gave out yard signs to all the seniors. We had, or graduates, we had some left over, and so aunts and uncles were taking them, which was fine. I mean, that was a lot of pride, so just a wonderful day.
Once again, shout-out to Mr. Cambic there. If you ever see Rick in action, he'll be on the floor, he'll be on top of a chair. Just a real action shot. This next up is one of my favorite part of our board meeting, which is basically student learning highlights. Next slide, Jim. Since August, we've been highlighting different divisions and different departments, different programs, from MTSS to counseling to our ELL department. This evening, we're going to highlight math and the science division, and we have a video here by Division Leader, Mr. Barago. Jim?
Hello, my name is Mike Barago, Division Leader of Math and Science. First, I want to say thank you for allowing me to highlight some great things that are happening within our division. Kicking off with science, here is a quick overview of the courses that are available to our students at each grade level. I want to emphasize that students are engaged in so many ways. Here are a couple of pictures of students who dissected charts in Mr. Lackus' class. In this picture, students are leveraging virtual reality to explore concepts that would otherwise be inaccessible to our students. And then these pictures show our AP Environmental Science students visiting Indiana Dunes to learn about unique ecosystems and importance of conservation. In the science department, we have a team of teachers that are delivering the curriculum through modeling instruction. This type of method provides content instruction while students are immersed in the process of doing science. This method of instruction was introduced a few years ago, and as a department, we want to take a look at our progress, where we want to go or how we want to build capacity in the next two years. I would like to recognize Mr. Baker and Mr. Berry for their acceptance to the University of Illinois Physics and Secondary Schools Partnership Program. According to U of I's website, the program combines the talent, experience, and enthusiasm of Illinois's top high school science teachers with the research and content expertise of the University of Illinois to engage Illinois high school students with the highest-quality physics experience. This is a great opportunity for both teachers and students, but more importantly, this opens up pathways for our students into engineering. Big shout-out to Mr. Baker and Mr. Berry for their time and effort in advancing our practices at Fenton High School and taking our students to the next level. Lastly, I want to share my excitement about the STEM Wing Construction Plan. This is a bold move to catapult our students into the future. Outside of more and modernized learning spaces, the STEM Wing will remove limitations on what teachers can accomplish with students' learning that are currently a reality in the classrooms that we have today. We will be able to have modern and relevant equipment that serves our classes for multiple years without yearly replacing them. The possibilities of installing hydroponics and building eco columns would allow students to model and observe bases of a growing ecosystem. In math, here are the courses available to our students at each grade level. We're excited about the changes that we are doing to better position our students to be successful. Starting this upcoming school year, we will be implementing our Foundations of Math course that supports students who are not at grade level in math walking into the freshman year. This class ensures that students receive foundational skills to be successful in the math sequences and consequently lead them to attaining skills that will serve them in real life. We will also be fully implementing our CPM curriculum, which is an integrated approach to learning mathematics. Our goal is to engage students in the process of learning through collaboration and inquiry. The curriculum and integrated approach also ensures that they receive continued exposure and learn skills in statistical and data analysis while learning math that we are all familiar with. Our computer science program is growing, and we're super excited about our two new teachers who will be joining us with expertise in both mathematics and computer science. This is another plus to our excitement about the STEM Wing. Finally, I want to highlight an exciting and growing collaboration between our school district and our feeder districts, Bensonville District 2 and Wooddale District 7. Last week, we hosted our second annual tri-district math articulation, where we discuss our goals of leveraging the articulation to improve our students' transition from middle to high school. Our very own math teachers walked the entire group through an activity showcasing the CPM curriculum and its power in engaging students through inquiry and group collaboration. As you can see, we have a lot of great things to look forward to in the coming years. We are working collaboratively with our teachers and building strong relationships with our feeder districts. Thank you for allowing me to provide you with a quick preview of the math and science division. Have a great evening.
Once again, I know Mr. Barago isn't here, but a shout-out to him. Just wanted to highlight some of the stuff that he said. First of all, a shout-out to the STEM Wing that will be voted on later on this afternoon in regards to the depth certificate. He slowly and systematically went through the math and science curriculum at the grade level, ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders, and 12th graders. He also highlighted, which was important, is interventions. So if kids aren't doing well, what do we do? That's part of the foundation. And what we're really proud about, and we discussed this earlier on this year, is articulation with District 2 and 7, our incoming ninth graders, and having that, those conversations and interventions and planning before our students get here. He also highlighted our growing, I wouldn't say popularity, demand for computer science as well. I'm going to put Kate here on the spot here. Kate, could you talk a little bit about the articulation that took place last week here with Districts 2 and District 7?
Yeah, so this articulation started last year. I think it was the first time that we all came together. This year, we brought in more teachers. They were representative of Math 1 and Math 2 from Fenton and 6th, 7th, and 8th grade from the feeder districts. And what we did was, we shared our visions that each school had for mathematics, and we looked at what are the similarities, where are some of the gaps. We also compared it to our strategic plan, our portrait of the graduate, to make sure that we were in line with that. We shared what are some of the challenges that we're having in our curriculum and what are some of the ways that we're overcoming them. That opened up a real vulnerability. It's hard for teachers from even the same school to talk about the challenges, but from other schools. And the teachers did such a nice job, and we realized that many of the challenges that we're facing at Fenton, they're facing, too. So this is really building the bridge of us being able to talk about how can we start, continue to do the good things that we're doing and move forward. What we're committed to is all teachers that we're at that collaboration are going to go observe at least one of their teacher at either Fenton or Blackhawk and Wooddale, and then we're going to come back in October and talk about what are some of the things that we saw. So we want to build that trust and that collaboration so that a teacher from Fenton can email an eighth-grade teacher and say, hey, you know, what are you trying there? And I think that was a really good beginning for that.
I have a question. I know we're focused mainly on incoming students, but what about the students that are struggling now? What is, you know, what's happening?
Yeah, absolutely. No, that's a great question. The math department has done an awesome job of pivoting this year and really making sure we're going to see, I think pivoting is going to be the key word, because for the next 12 years, we're going to see kids that have gaps in different areas, depending on where they were at home, right? And as, I know as a teacher, that's scary because you kind of, we haven't seen that before. It was kind of, you could do the same thing, you kind of knew what kids were going to come in with. And our math department is figuring out really innovative ways to make sure that they are catching up. So this year, what we did was something called Foundations, where kids who weren't being successful, they got to repeat a semester, and now they're going to continue that into summer school. We hope that that's kind of a one-time thing that we're going to have to do, and we'll continue to learn as we go on. So I'm proud of the math department and Mr. Barago for being as flexible and innovative as they're being.
You know, just to add one other thing, we also are expanding our academic literacy program. As Kate knows, because she led this initiative, it was in English in the past. This next year, it's going to be in math and English. So it's building those skills that are necessary alongside while they're taking a math course, and that's, so we're trying to get kids that are at risk or we think would need that support right- trying to get kids that are at risk, or we think would need that support, right off the bat. And that can also have on and off ramps, where sometimes a student, we may, you know, may be to the point where they may not need that anymore, and then we discover someone else might need that. So we're trying to explore that, too.
Thank you.
With the inclusion of the... more of the IT-related pieces with falling under the math and science, is that going to be following mostly under the science area, the mathematics? Is it elective, or are we talking about kind of a... you know, if you do CompSci One and Two, you don't need Calculus One and Two?
That's a great question. Schools are really all over the place with that, where that's coming, falling in. Sometimes it has to do with the certification of the teachers. You know, if it's a person who's computer science with a math background, or computer science with a science background, what we're doing at Fenton right now is keeping it as elective, and then we're going to continue to explore if that makes sense for our kids, and we'll be able to shift that if we need to.
It's great to see the articulation with the other districts with math. Is it being explored or considered in other areas also?
Yeah, absolutely. So the goal next year is to start with the English department, or continue on, I guess, with the English department, and then keep ramping it up to social studies and science.
It's great to see.
Yeah. It's really... It was an awesome experience. It was really good.
Now, you can see why we like this part of the board meeting, because it really... We talk about math, we talk about ELL, we talk about science, but it really, it's a time for the board to take a pause, dig a little deeper, talk about it a little bit more, and we'll continue to do this month after month.
Is there any way to see any of the curriculums that are being done for the various things? Like, it was quick up there, like what the classes were. I'm just curious as to, you know, what they're delving into now versus 20 years ago when I was...
Yeah, absolutely. I'll talk a little bit about that in our summer curriculum hours. One of the things that we're in the process of is, it's called mapping, so that what we would like is every course to have a forward-facing document, so that we could have it on the website eventually. That's probably a one- or two-year project. There are some courses right now that we could give that to you right away, but we want to make sure that anybody could go on the website and see, what are they doing in computer science? Or what are they doing in Math One? So that's a current project we're working on.
I know everybody loves acronyms, but could you help me out with CPM and what that actually stands for?
So it's kind of funny. CPM stands for College Preparatory Math. This is actually an old program, and I think when you hear the term college prep, it's a little bit outdated, which I think is why they don't necessarily... But it's a well-known name. What CPM is really all about is having kids, instead of a teacher lecture, kind of the way we all learn math, teacher lectures, we practice like 10 problems. CPM is giving them an authentic problem, and the kids stand up, they work together, they figure it out, and then the teachers teach them like, okay, this is what you actually needed to do in order to solve that problem. So it's helping the kids. It's making it more relevant to them. They're more active. They're collaborating with one another. So they're learning all those skills, instead of, I think, we used to just think of collaboration kind of in a social studies or an English class, but they're learning those skills in math, and it is just so much more engaging.
So it's like word problems, though?
Yeah. I mean, that's the base of it, right? But better than that.
Have you seen an uptick or a downtick in the... what I always refer to as wet classes? So the... when we saw the dissection of the shark, how has that been going with the science classes and things like that? Are we seeing more of that kind of engagement in biology and in chemistry? Are we seeing more of a walking back with a lot of the computer-rated visualizations and things?
Um, I would say that it's kind of been the same. I don't know that it's been more or less. Student interest has remained the same. I think our science teachers have really valued the hands-on lab experiments and things like that. There are ways that science teachers are supplementing with some of the technology, but I mean, I think you can see from Dan Latka, I know Shelley Bible, they... It's really still a very hands-on, their lab focus.
Other districts that I've seen some of this stuff with, they've moved away from some of these things, more towards the 3D models and stuff like that, in an effort to save costs. So I was just curious if we had started down that path. It's not my favorite, personally, but was just curious if that was...
I think we use it here and there, but we, you know, we know the kids prefer getting their hands in it.
Literally, at times.
Some of them. Some of them don't.
Thank you.
Was it test scores that made you determine that this is what we need? Like, what was it that you looked at that... And I get... I'm trying to ask the question the right way, but what was brought to your attention that those curriculum or those classes needed to be put in place? Was it students' test scores? What was it that?
I think student test scores played into it, but honestly, the test scores, because of the pandemic, are all over the place. I think really what we're seeing is what our teachers are noticing and kids' success rates as far as their grades go. That has been our biggest indicator. And also, you know, our students are really frank with us about where they're struggling. Their... Our counselors do a great job, so it really is a lot of self-diagnosis. I think also building this relationship with the grade schools, they've been able to say, here are some areas that this particular class is struggling with. So it's a combination of all of those things, but a lot of it is just kind of self-diagnosing and seeing where the kids are.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I think it's important for the board to realize, too, just to put it out there. There has been always articulation with the feeder school, but due to the pandemic and the learning loss you're hearing, it's ramped up a little bit. In regards to intervention, there's always been an intervention. If you hear me say this over and over again, good, effective schools have strong interventions, and that's what we're trying to get to. There are no more questions. We'll move on. I'm going to hand it off to Principal Benson here, Code of Conduct revisions.
Okay, so if you recall last board meeting, we... I went through sort of the highlights of what we'd be going through here today. So this is our second review. We're going to ask for you to approve these changes to the discipline part of the school handbook. Every year, there's a review of the discipline policies, or what we call Code of Conduct. There's a committee that met numerous times, input from staff members, parents, or students, and this is the changes that we came up with. It's also based on, if you recall, our policy meetings where press gives us model policies. They also give us a model student handbook. This year in particular, we knew it would be time to review that, to make... and update our policies to make sure that they were... that they were solid policies based on state laws and various ISB changes. So without further ado, truancy. So we added in there the concept of if you miss 10 days of school, there's an attendance contract. We've been doing this, but it wasn't explicit in the handbook, so this clarifies that. Excused absences, we added students are allowed to take five mental health days. Again, this is Illinois statute, and they can also attend one civic event per year. So we added that. Some language things, simple things like we used to call something a lost Tuesday, which is we used to have professional development on Tuesday afternoon. Well, now we do that on Mondays, so now we just have what we call extended detention. So we want to be clear in case a parent is wondering, what is extended detention? Now, we explain it in the handbook. Tardiness, we have a hero system, and I'm going to beat you to the question where you ask, what does it stand for? It doesn't stand for anything. It's the name of the company? So I just figured I'd get to that. But basically, it's a system we use where we scan kids if they're tardy, and they get a tardy ticket. It's not a municipal ticket. It's just a tardy ticket that they receive. So it's... I'm trying to anticipate your questions. Academic dishonesty, if that does occur, we're out of the business of no credit will be given. So we're not doing that anymore. There's hero again, just kind of...
Reed has a question.
Reed.
I didn't know how to...
Yep.
Wait, can you back?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could you go back, Jim?
No credit. If a person was academically dishonest, does that mean they'll still be given credit now?
Well, what it means is, as far as the disciplinary action taken by the school, we're not going to impose that. What it means is, a teacher could make the student do it again. The teacher has some discretion in that realm.
They could still get credit for...
Theoretically, they could. So let's say a teacher says, okay, you got that AI, right? AI did the assignment. You turned it in. Right, right, right. So let's pick out something that's potentially current. So maybe they identify it, then maybe they'll make sure that student does it again. So it's up... It's more, instead of just saying that automatically a dean meets with you and it's a zero, it's...
They get a chance for a redo.
Potentially, right. Yeah, exactly. Okay?
All right.
Yeah. Back to the next slide. Again, we just explained the hero system a little bit more in depth, so parents know. Changing the wording from in-school suspension to in-school intervention, that's one of the things we're working on over the summer, is make sure we have a program where if a student is in in-school, that we can intervene with more push-in services, but also reflection on how you got there, how you can avoid being there again, making sure academically you can keep up, because we don't want the student to get behind academically if they're in the in-school intervention. And then, a little bit more explanation on restorative practices, which we've been involved with for years, but we just wanted, again, put it in the handbook, so parents will understand when deans or other staff members talk about restorative practices, they have a background that they can refer to. So any questions on any of these revisions?
Yeah, point and information. In here, it says in administrative action for the various tardies, but I don't see any description of what in administrative action is delineated as. Can you go into some further detail on that?
Okay, I should say, the memo itself has more details, and I think... Are you referring to that?
I'm looking at that tardy to school, 30 for 30 minutes. We struck in a truancy citation being issued and changed that to in administrative action. I'm just curious as to what in administrative action entails.
Yeah. Let me find it real quick. I'm getting it up here. Okay, tardy to school. Is that the heading you're at? Number two, tardy to school?
Yeah, page 43. And I think... Well, it's actually... It's the... Yeah. Two tardy minutes to school. The two tardy examples there, 30 minutes and 31 minutes, where it says, may result in administrative action.
Right. So when you're late to school, so the process of what occurred?
Yeah, all right. Thanks.
So when you're late to school, what happens is the students do line up. Okay, I see it. All right. What happens is the students line up, they get a... through the hero system, get a tardy. The question comes, if you're more than 30 minutes late, is it really a tardy? You know, it's a little bit more than a tardy. It's not a class cut, per se, but it's pretty close to it. So basically, what it says now, tardy logged in hero, two detentions to be served within two school days, minor step issued, and administrative action. It doesn't specifically spell out a specific consequence, but it does reference potential administrative action. So that's not... That's typically what I... What would happen is you would receive two detentions. But we also reserve the right for administrative action. It could be like, where were you? Were you in the building? Were you outside the building or what have you? So they wanted that language in there in case any other administrative action needed to be done.
But we haven't defined what those things could be.
Well, it just said two detentions when you enter the building. So typically, it would be two detentions when you come in, let's say, 35, 40 minutes late. Administrative action is general enough, so there needed to be any additional administrative action. I think it's important to understand that these are guidelines. It's not, if you do this, this is what happens automatically. So that's why there's times where we would reference that.
Yeah. Like I said, I was just curious if there was a definition of what administrative action meant. It sounds like there isn't, and I'm happy to move on.
Any other questions?
Can we just go back to what Reed was talking about with the... Go back one, with the cheating, academic dishonesty? I'm hoping that if we're catching kids doing academic dishonesty, that we're doing a little more than just having them redo an assignment, because if they go to college and they have academic dishonesty in a paper, they could be expelled from the university. So I'm hoping that we're teaching these kids that this is not okay, and that we're not just saying, oh, we'll just redo it in your own words, you know, that we're talking to them about the potential consequences of doing this outside of high school, if we're not going to be having consequences for it, you know?
Yeah, I think we're not condoning the action, nor are we supporting it. The remainder of the policy does, no credit will be given is crossed out, but it references referrals given to the student and assigned to the dean. The teacher notifies the parent by phone, so they're notified, so then the parent needs to become aware. Counselors notified by the teacher, so then the counselors... And then there's also like a second incident, third incident.
That's all I'm asking. Yeah, I'm not saying let's string them up. I'm just saying let's make sure that they understand that this could become a huge consequence for them outside, you know, in a higher academic setting.
No, I think you're right. I think it also depends on the assignment. If it's like a 10-point quiz versus a term paper, if you have something that black and white in the handbook, it's like, okay, I guess we're not giving any credit, and now, yeah, it could be a devastating effect based on the assignment.
You know, I think one of the other things is like, it's a little bit different now for the kids. Like, you have to be really explicit with them about what cheating is, because there are so many ways that they can do it, and a lot of times, they don't know, right? Especially like freshman or sophomore year, they think that they're rewording something, and so I think this is also giving them the grace.
It's a teachable moment, right.
Yes, it's a huge teachable moment. It's giving them a little bit of grace, assuming positive intent, right? And making sure teachers have a little bit of flexibility.
Absolutely.
But yes, and I think certainly, as they get into junior and senior year, it is an expectation that they know how to do this. But, you know, that's the reason. So there are consequences and all that, absolutely, but there is a lot of things that it's like, oh, they really didn't know that's what they were doing.
It's a sad... I got it. This is a personal opinion. It's a sad commentary today. If kids don't know what cheating is, or if they're busy putting the time into rewording something, I think they've already got a clue that maybe they're stretching the truth a bit on that.
Well, I understand what she's saying, but you have to leave with a little bit of grace and teachable moment in freshman year.
Well, I'm not... I'm not trying to be punitive, but I think there has to be some clear idea of what's appropriate and what's inappropriate.
I think the thing that I like most about this change, though, is that it sounds like Mr. Benson was saying, is that we're empowering the teacher to make the decision as to what's going on here, right? Like, it doesn't need to go to Mr. Ontango. It doesn't need to come to us. It doesn't need to go through a huge process. We're empowering the teacher to say, okay, this is a simple infraction here. They're the best ones to view the intent and to kind of act as judge in that space. I think that's a really important thing, that we're not taking that away, or that we're kind of giving that back and letting that kind of happen at the appropriate level.
Yeah, I think that's well stated, in essence, whatever he just said.
I talk a lot, I know.
Thank you, Dr. Benson.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item. Kate?
Yeah. So as you heard a lot tonight, we are going on summer break starting on Friday. But one of the things that we do at Fenton is we offer curriculum hours for summer work. This is a unique opportunity, because obviously, we know that our teachers and our counselors and our specialists are always rewriting curriculum during the year, but it's on the fly, right? And they're, you know, they don't have as much time, because they're balancing so many things. So we offer summer curriculum hours for teachers, specialists, and counselors to continue diving into work. So this year, we have 74 different certified staff members who have applied to get to do additional work. They can apply in addition to special programming. So it's teachers, MTSS, so interventionists, our freshman transition team, our SEL committee, and our PBIS committee. SEL is social emotional learning, PBIS, positive behavior. So there's two ways that can... two existing buckets of summer work, so existing coursework. So one of the things that we really worked on in professional development this year was teachers taking a look at their units and what they were teaching, and making sure that students could see themselves in the curriculum. Teachers did an awesome job of starting that work, and they're going to apply to continue working on that over the summer, fine-tune units. As Kent asked about before, one of the ways that you can get existing coursework is working on the curriculum mapping, right? So people are going to be mapping out their courses, so that eventually, hopefully in a year, two years, we're going to have a forward-facing website where you can take a look at all the different courses and what's going on there. It's great for teachers. It's great for students. It's also good for a new teacher coming into the district, that they can It's also good for a new teacher coming into the district that they can see this is what English II teaches, right? And then we have new courses and resources, which is always really exciting, as Mike talked about, the CPM curriculum in math. There are new textbooks that are being used, both hard textbooks and online textbooks, which we'll talk about at the next board meeting, and then we're developing some new courses. So as Mike talked about, foundations of math. Right now our English, sorry, our social studies and our EL departments are working on developing a Latino studies course that'll be proposed hopefully in the fall. We have healthcare occupations, if you remember Michelle Papa Nicolo talked about that, some of our computer science classes. So this is a really great opportunity for our staff to dig in, get ready for the next school year, and kind of perfect the things that they've been working on.
The eight, eighteen twenty-two hours, one thousand eight hundred and twenty-two hours of, of work. I did hear one teacher mention something about nine, nine unpaid hours in the summer. Is that, does that have any effect?
These are all paid. I can't quite remember what, what was said at the.
I think they were referring to, there's not all the, they do a lot of work just independently on their own, like Ms. Gasko was talking about her syllabus and getting that organized. That's, that's just work that she's doing just because she's a professional. This is all hours that either we initiated or the staff initiated, and we are documenting that, and we're asking for your approval since they'll be compensated.
So, Sylvia, what the comment was, was that there, the assertion was that there was approximately nine hours a week being spent outside of the classroom, and it sounds like classroom hours are the paid hours that teachers are spending revising courses, doing other non-classroom-related tasks around curriculum and things that was, was being said there.
Okay, because I understood, I wrote it down, nine extra unpaid hours during the summer. So I was, that's, that's why we were talking about summer hours up here, so I was just trying to understand the difference between what they spoke on and what's up here, because it's, it's paid hours.
Correct.
I recall the same thing.
Teachers do do a lot, you know, I think what, I think Stugaska was a great example, something like working on your syllabus that you, you know, that wouldn't, updating it, that wouldn't necessarily be covered here, that's just something that they do on their own. So I mean, there are some teachers who are doing things that aren't covered here that they're not getting paid for. I think that's what she was referring to.
Just wanted.
And for, you know, is there an application process for this?
Yeah, so.
And what's the, how do we determine where we're going to be, you know, investing? Like I'm seeing here, major coursework revision, one hundred and eighty hours for English, one hundred and thirty hours for science and social studies, but only fifteen hours for business and, and EL. So, just trying to understand kind of that variance.
Yeah, as far as like the new courses, it's what's been proposed this past year and was approved as new courses, so they get the priority. And then I would say as far as, you know, when you're looking at the other areas, each department kind of has a different focus. Obviously, math and science are ramping up this year. EL, we've had a lot of newcomer, incoming students, many of them speaking Ukrainian, so some of our teachers are working on resources for them. So it kind of depends year to year. Sometimes departments go through a heavy load of like, wow, social studies is really revamping, and then you might not see as much work for the next two years. So, you know, there is definitely a rhyme or reason, there's a, an application process that I take a look at what they're applying for, and then the division leaders also do to make sure that it's in line with, you know, what we're doing, but that's kind of the process that goes through.
Yeah, I was seeing that the one was the major course revision, but then I see now in the new course development, we see a pretty sizable investment in the ones we're seeing lesser in the, in the revision, so.
Yeah, exactly.
It actually looks to be pretty balanced, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Next slide, Jim. This one, back again to you, Kate.
Yeah. So the other thing that we do during the summer is summer workshop hours, so that's where teachers are actually collaborating here together. Sometimes with the curriculum work, they're collaborating here together, but this is more that, you know, we're doing something, maybe a training. This year what we're focusing on is a book club. So, last summer we read Goldie Mohammed's first book, which was called Cultivating Genius, and it's really talking about how to help students, particularly minority students, see themselves in the class material form. Her second book came out this year, we, it's really exciting, we have twenty-one teachers, two instructional coaches, and myself, who are going to participate in this book study. Her book is beautiful, first of all, to start with, like, it's just a really appealing book. But this is really, she's taken that next step of talking about making sure students see themselves in the, in the curriculum and that it's joyful, right? Sometimes it's, you're looking at primary source documents that a lot of times it's about oppression or really difficult times, and this is also trying to talk through how do we teach students and make sure that there's joy in what they're learning about and that it's very positive. So making sure that there's a good balance there. So I'm really excited to do that. If anyone would like to join us for the book study, you are more than welcome. They're going to be by Zoom, and if you would like a copy of the book, I'm happy to get it for you.
I would.
I would.
Yeah?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Kate. Next slide. This one's for the board here, this is just discussion only here and just throwing out some ideas. This is for your board meetings, okay? So here's a schedule. We know, we got some feedback from our executive board here, our vice president as well as our president, and some of you I spoke to individually. We've traditionally had our board meeting the last Wednesday of the month. I'm assuming there's time to, to state your opinion. Do we keep it that way? Right now, this is what's going to you, and you will vote on this next month. It's scheduled every, the last Wednesday of every month for our board meeting, except for Thanksgiving, November, the Christmas break in December, and March for our spring break. That will be the third Wednesday of the month. Part of the reason we, particularly Bruce and his crew there, like the fourth Wednesday is because we would like to pay our bill at the end of the month. So, something for you to chew on. We're also assuming you guys would like to keep it at seven PM, so we could have a committee meetings at six PM, so we could have two at once. So, any comments on that?
Can we have it on the fourth Wednesday instead of the last Wednesday? I don't know, I know there's like one or two times a year.
Yes, I think that, yeah.
It's always the fourth Wednesday? Okay.
Yep.
Very good. Except for the two callouts, or the three callouts.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. That silence means to me that we'll move on with that. So that will come up at the next board meeting to be voted on. Next one is the Affordable Care Act ACA report. Every year we do this for our part-timers. We're mandated by the government to ask our part-timers who clock in more than thirty hours per week if they would like to have coverage, insurance coverage using the Affordable Care Act. This year we had one candidate that qualifies. We've spoken to that individual, and they refused to have coverage. This next one, as you saw, this is our water mitigation map for the summer starts, actually, we start this work, this work, construction work next month. Dan Sullivan reviewed this at the committee meeting. Basically, we're commuting, communicating to our, our staff, our students and parents, an email will go out in regards to basically saying, hey, look, Fenton's under construction, we're doing some construction work, please stay away from these sites. The sites include all of our fields, the back parking lot, because that's where the trucks will be going to and from. And the construction location will be fenced off with either a green or red fencing. So, that will be going out, and we just want to make sure everyone is aware of it. Next slide. FOIA local labs. Local lab, as you, as you know, is a, I'm trying to remember it, let me look at my notes here. They always ask for FOIA, that's for sure. It's a news agency, and, and real quickly, they're asking, have we ever done business in regards to invoices and transaction with Lori Children's Hospital from July twenty, July first, twenty twenty-two to present day? We have investigated, we have not done any businesses with Laura, Lori Children's Hospital invoices and transaction, therefore we replied with our response, and that has been resolved. That's the only FOIA we received this month.
Lori and the, the one in the city?
I believe so. Yes. Is there more than one? Mary, just one, yep. Next slide. That is the end of, Jim, next slide. That is the end of our informational items.
The next item, consent agenda.
Okay. We have additional information that we would like to share with the Board of Education in closed session related to the personal report. Therefore, we would like to pull out the personal report from the consent agenda and vote on it separately after the closed session.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, excluding the personnel report, which will be voted on after the closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Motion.
Pass.
Pretty good, huh?
Rego? Yes? Figaroa?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Now, motion passed.
Anticipated summer curriculum hours. May I have a motion that the Board of Education authorizes administration to utilize the requested twenty twenty-three anticipated summer curriculum hours as presented?
So moved?
Second?
Roll call. Discussion, sorry.
Just real quickly, this is a couple minutes ago, Kate Ward reviewed this, Jim, next slide, so everyone sees this. Reviewed anticipated summer curriculum hours, now we're putting it up to vote for the board.
Discussion, roll call.
Rego?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed. Anticipated summer workshop hour. May I have a motion that the Board of Education authorizes the administration to utilize the requested twenty twenty-three anticipated summer workshop hours as presented?
I'll make that motion. Second?
Discussion?
Once again, Kate Ward reviewed this a couple minutes ago. One of the books that we're going to be reading as a group is The Unearthing Joy.
I have a question, quickly, I'm talking.
Yes.
The summer book club, are those hours included in the eighteen hundred and twenty-two hours? Is this, are these paid hours?
They are paid hours, they're separate. There's two different rates for summer curriculum hours and then a different rate for summer workshop hours, but both are included in your packet.
Okay.
Yep.
Summer book club, it takes twenty-one teachers to?
No, twenty-one teachers will be participating.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-one teachers will be participating.
Oh, it's too, sorry, okay.
We wish we had more.
All right.
Sylvia, just to highlight for you, that is a forty-five hours requested at twenty-one dollars and twenty cents an hour for nine hundred and fifty-four dollars for that payout.
All right. Roll call.
Rego?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Can I just ask one question? Could any, any teacher do this book club?
Teacher, counselor, specialist?
Okay.
Absolutely.
Twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four salary adjustments. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year salary adjustments for at-will four percent increase and bus drivers two percent increase?
We need a motion?
Yes.
All right, one, I'll do it, yes, motion.
Second?
Discussion?
We discussed this at closed session, and this, this is our recommendation for salary adjustments.
So just reiterating, this was discussed at the last?
Closed session.
Closed session, last month.
That is correct.
Roll call.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Resolution to approve the issuance of thirty-two million debt certificates to improve the site of, to improve the site of and renovate, alter, repair, and equip the Fenton High School building. May I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution authorizing and providing for an installment purchase agreement for the purpose of paying the cost of purchasing real or personal property or both in and for Community High School District Number One Hundred, DuPage County, Illinois, and for the issuance, for the issue of not to exceed thirty-two million debt certificates of said school district evidencing the right to payment under said agreement, providing for the security, providing for the security for, and means of payment under said agreement of said certificates and authorizing the sale of said certificates to the purchaser thereof.
Yes, I'll give you a motion.
A second.
Discussion?
Next slide, I would like to show some slides in regards to discussion for the board. As the Stengwin project, we've been talking about a stem wing for Fenton basically since the facility audit in twenty nineteen and has been discussed therefore, for the last couple of months, we have been discussing it further. And what we're looking at is a two-story, thirty-four thousand square foot new addition for Fenton, which is modernized and twenty-first century modeled. There'll be approximately nine to thirteen new stem wing classrooms for this building. Next slide. Next couple of slides here are some rendering. There's the front end, front of, of the new stem wing, which is facing eighty-three. So you could see there, these, once again, there's rendering, it's class, front face there with our logo as well as Fenton High School on top. Next slide. Classrooms will be modeled after the pictures you see there, twenty-first century science and career pathway classrooms. We will have a learning staircase there where folks could go from the first floor to the second floor, but also have an options for some lecturing, some learning, some discussions there as well. As you can see on the second floor, there are some small breakout rooms there where our students can discuss and explore the subject matter, topics.
Okay, excuse me.
Yes.
This is the wow learning stair?
That is, it's been coined that, we like it to call it a learning, learning space. Yes. I think it's a beautiful, beautiful rendering right there, personally.
The, the wow comes from the architects, and it's the wow moment that when you walk into that, you're like, wow, this is a, a different sort of place, a different sort of area to learn, and it's been tagged as wow from that. So, hope that answers your question.
Thanks, Ken. Here's just a really quick schematic of the floors. What you see in the colors there, the blues, areas there is the first floor and second floor highlighting the different classrooms. Next slide, Jim. Here is also another picture from eighty.
Size, oh, just a second. Size-wise, how does the, the new classroom compare to what we currently have?
Bigger, bigger, more modernized, higher ceilings.
Supposed to be bigger, but you never know.
It's definitely bigger, more standardized.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as you guys know, most of our classrooms are smaller. I think movable space, more light, modern plumbing, modern technology, easier access, Wi-Fi access, different floors there, just really a modern STEM classroom.
So instead of twenty-two, it could be thirty-two.
It could be, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five.
It's hard to see on there, but I think it says eleven hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Most of them are averaging about eleven hundred square feet. So, and ours are current, I think our average right now is about eight hundred.
Eight hundred and nine hundred.
So, about three hundred square feet larger than what we currently have.
That's great.
Yeah.
Once again, the front picture of the, the building there, by the end of the Once again, the front picture of the, the building there, by the end of the water construction project as well as the stem wing project, that's what we hope it will look like. Once again, there's a lot of work, these are renderings, we need to communicate with other administrators, some teacher feedback and so forth. So, this is a 15-month schedule, starting June 2024, and once again, there'll probably be two summers when it's complete, so we're looking at June, August, July 2025. So really excited about the timeline here. Next slide. As you know, this is the debt certificate timeline process, I'm going to hand this one over to Mr. Martin.
Just a recap of what we talked about earlier this evening during the committee meeting. We're asking the board tonight to approve a resolution to move this next phase of the debt certificate process forward, and we'll ask the board to act on just a few minutes here, and that'll be the first $14 million sale. June and July, we would actually conduct that sale if not sooner, and your timing is critical with that piece, but $14 million would be the first phase of that, and that's to benefit the district with, with the arbitrage earnings. And then January of 2024 would be the remaining amount of debt certificates, and that amount is yet to be determined, the board would give us authority up to 18 million, but that doesn't necessarily mean we would issue all that at that time, the full amount. Go ahead.
Just quickly, and some of this we've already talked about, the issuing of these current debt, you know, time is of the essence to catch the market and to be able to make advantage of the arbitrage, so, you know, certainly encourage the powers that be to get that moving as quickly as possible. But then, I wasn't sure I was clear on how soon the second portion could be issued, although I think apparently the state has put some restrictions on how quickly you can do that.
Yeah, I think for arbitrage reasons, there was a six-month window, waiting window to issue it in the same fiscal year.
I, I would, you know, I would encourage double checking that because if we're so fortunate that the market is out of balance, so to speak, that you can make money by borrowing money, that I would certainly, you respect, just on itself, without considering any improvement projects, it makes all the sense in the world, just as an investment opportunity.
Right. We, we can certainly verify that with our financial advisors.
There's just, there's too much, too much opportunity that could be missed.
I believe this was discussed at a previous meeting, that I think the total amount that we can actually put into the investment is no more than 15 million.
At a time.
Yeah. I think in total, from what they were saying, that's why we had to do the 14, so I don't know if we can take 15 and then take another 15 and just stick it all in there, so.
Yeah, you're right, that's why it's under 15 million, because of the 600,000 potential earnings and earning arbitrage, that would still be, keep us under the $15 million threshold.
But I think it's, but I think it's in total though, correct? Like, I can't do it again and again and again?
Right.
And, and continue to build like a Fenton trust essentially, it's anything after you go over that 15 million ends up going back to the state.
That's our, that's our understanding right now from our advisors, yes.
Yeah, so, I don't think that say we can put 15 in and then put another 15 and a half, 30 total, it's...
Well, you gotta spread it six months apart though, I mean, apparently from what I heard.
Yeah.
But there's no reason in the world you couldn't have 30 as long as you, as long as you adhere to whatever the time, time spread, time limitations are that are imposed on you.
Yeah, the only drawback might be with that is if we issue it too soon, we may not know what we need at that time.
Doesn't matter if you can make the arbitrage, seriously.
Yeah, but we, I guess we would be issuing potentially more debt than we would, may need for the project.
You're making money on it though, wouldn't you?
Well, it's still gonna have to be paid back. Yes.
You've got money to pay it back, and I mean, I don't know what the repayment limitations would be, but I don't want to lose sight of that, you know?
Typically, there's a penalty on early repayment on debt certificates because the folks that you are buying the investment are buying for the totality of the debt certificate, so by closing it early, usually there are penalties and fees, or you're at least ending up owing some additional fraction of what would have been lost if it had not been taken out over its entire time, so.
That's part of the investment decision.
And I'll be meeting with them tomorrow too, so we have a scheduled meeting already, so.
Roll call.
I only, I heard Mr. Goodrich with the motion, but I didn't hear who.
Yep.
Rego.
Juliet.
Juliet, okay, thank you.
Or did somebody else second it and I didn't hear? Oh, no, Sylvia did. Sorry, Sylvia.
Okay.
Pardon.
Rego?
Yes.
Ryzinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed. Stormwater mitigation bid release two. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve bid release number two to the following firms, Abbey Paving slash Construction slash Concrete Work, 820, $820,970. John Keno and Company Site Demolition and Escavation Work, $1,488,690. Abbey Paving Asphalt, Asphalt Paving, $232,000. Peerless Enterprise Fencing, $69,180. L S C O and Sons Company Site Utilities Work, $1,768,000. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Martin.
That, that is the recommendation, what we talked about earlier this evening, bid release number two, this is really the biggest portion and bid package of this project, so there may be some smaller bids coming forward after this, but this is by far the biggest chunk of it, of this total combined cost of $4,378,840. And again, just to emphasize, that is a little over a million dollars under budget, under the projection, so we're pleased about that.
Roll call.
Rego?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Ryzinski?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed. School Treasurer Surety Bond. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve resolution approving surety bond of treasurer?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. Martin.
Last month, the board may recall, they appointed a treasurer, that happened to be me, so this month, a school treasurer is required to have a surety bond in place that the board would approve for, really the, the protection of the board if there was any mishandling of funds and that type of thing, so it's really kind of an insurance policy. We're required to hold 25%, or write a bond for 25% of the highest amount of balances we would incur over the course of a fiscal year. That is in the process of potentially changing, reducing it down to 10% from 25%, but as of today, we have to submit this to the ROE by the middle of, the Regional Office of Education, by the middle of June, and what we know today until it becomes law is 25%, so that's what we're recommending tonight, that going forward, I think after this, we're, the governor's expected to sign that bill, both houses have passed it, it hasn't happened yet, unfortunately, it's kind of a timing issue, but we've got to approve the bond, move forward, it's at the 25% level.
If the law, if the law changes, can you renegotiate the bond?
We're gonna try, we've contacted the bond issuing company and asked them if they would consider that, they're getting a lot of requests.
Requests like that, right?
Just about every district in the state is asking for that, so we'll, we'll keep you apprised of that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're hopeful that will happen, but not sure yet.
Roll call.
Rego?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Ryzinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Committee reports. Bensonville Community Foundation?
Well, the new members meet tomorrow, so we'll have more to report next month.
Also, you had the, you gave the...
Yeah, the Fred Lewis Scholarship.
Correct.
Thank you, Juliette, for facilitating that, and Sylvia, it was $750 to one of our student, Jessica Luvin, Ray, help me out, Luvin Vine? Van Lewen, apologized, apologized, Jessica, so, really great event, thank you for that.
Board Finance and Facilities Committee? DEI.
Nothing to report.
Yes, we do. We had a meeting with Melissa. May 3rd, and it was over the sun.
Go ahead, Leo, you've got something to report.
Well, first of all, we introduce ourselves because we are part of the new committee, and we talk about how we're gonna proceed, how often we're gonna meet, and especially since Sylvia and I are the first time working together, we're still not having set up a date, but we will.
Yes.
We're working on that. And it's all what we got to report on that.
Now, Board Finance and Facilities Committee?
I think we have beat this up this evening, everything that needed to be approved has been approved, and I'm gonna leave it at that.
Board Policy Committee?
Nothing to report.
I guess not, oh.
IASB delegate, nothing to report. Linda?
That would be me, there was a meeting last Friday, unfortunately, I couldn't make it, but the topic was, they had a guest speaker, our state superintendent, Tony Sanders, former superintendent of U46, that's Elgin, was the guest speaker there, and they also, they discussed their budget.
NetSec?
It's me again, okay, we got the meeting on May 8th, I believe, and it was a long meeting. First of all, we renovated contract for many of the administrators, also, in the meantime, we got the meeting for the government board, and guess what? I was elected again, so.
As president.
It was, again, it was a long meeting, we start at 3 o'clock, and the government meeting started at 4:00, and we finished almost at 5:00 PM, so, it was a productive meeting, and we met all, most of the teachers, the negotiators, Mr. Entango was there, and believe me, it was, I was happy to see a happy faces, because they were expressing their emotions, how the contract end up, and I tell you that, in the beginning, I was scared, because how they react, and in the meantime, they go in and out, and I don't like the way the, the things are setting down, but finally, we got agreement, and they were really happy. And I, you know, I wish Fenton can do the same, to be honest. We need someone to put their feet in the ground and be a good teachers, not, well, sorry about that. I went, I talked too much, but the one thing I want to say, that I really respect the organization that we work together, and they got a lot of respect for the kids. It's all, thank you.
Just wanted to really, so proud of Leo, as you know, at NetSec, Fenton's well represented, as you know, I'm a board member as well, but he's actually the president of the board, so we're, we're very well represented there at NetSec.
I'd like to remind the board of the Triple I Conference, if you haven't responded to Mary by attending, please do, and also with the August 24th Board Workshop. Next board meeting, new business. Next board meeting, Wednesday, June 28th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, with a tentative Board Policy Committee and Finance Facility Meeting scheduled prior to the regular meeting at 6:00 and 6:30 PM respectively. Closed session. May I have a motion and a second to go in to close session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel, counsel for the public body, including hearing, testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act, 5 Illinois CS 120 slash 2 C1. Also, for the purpose of collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salaries, schedules for one or more classes of employee, code 5 Illinois CS 120 slash 2 C2. Roll call? Oh, gosh. Motion.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion, or is that done?
Sylvia and, and John.
Roll call.
Rego?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Ryzinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
We can do a five, five-minute break?
I know.
Back in open session. May I have a motion to approve the personnel report with the following amendments. Exclude Mr. Brandon Resuik from the personnel report, too. Due to a typo on item number five of the personnel report regarding summer school, the correct date should read 2023 Summer School Program.
I will make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Roll call.
Regal?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed. May I have a motion to approve the contract of Mr. Brandon Resuik as a four-time teacher, Master Lane Step I.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Regal?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed. May I have a motion to approve the additional compensation for Mr. Brandon Resuik for the exact amount of $2,763.
So moved.
Second.
Yes. Roll call.
Regal.
Not ready to leave, are you?
Regal.
Regal.
Yes, yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rizinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, yes.
All in favor? The As have it the majority. Good night.